Are you good?
Now Bob. Bob, you ready?
I'm starting.
I'm not sure what to put this. I'll put it right here.
Okay.
Go ahead and start checking on the students. Hell yeah.
Okay, call the meeting. Okay, I'd like to call the village council, May 28, 2020, meeting for a special meeting for interviewing purposes for the Village Marvin Council position. Do we have any changes or concerns on the agenda, adoption of the agenda?
No.
No.
Okay, all those in favor is with the agenda as revised or stated?
No motion.
Need a motion to approve it?
So.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, we'll bring Andy on down.
And then I'll start from the very beginning.
Okay. You want to sit here? Or just so you're closer to the thing, so.
Closer to the action.
Okay, our first candidate is Andy Wortman. Full disclosure, I've known Andy for probably at least seven years or so, or at least in that range.
Somewhere in that range.
Yes, absolutely, so. I've been an upstanding member of the community for some time and has been very involved, so. I'm sorry?
No, speak directly to the microphone, so I can hear.
Okay, that's over here, I'm speaking to the wrong microphone.
It's Andy, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so Andy, what we're going to do is we're essentially asking all candidates the same question and we're just going to make some notes, there may be some follow-up questions by council or those that are making the decision, so, and it's due to go approximately 30 minutes, so. All right.
I'll do a brief.
You want to start?
Yeah, I'm going to do a brief. I'm Chapman Spencer, I'm the village attorney. This is, as you probably know, the vacancy for the seat formerly held by Robert Epps. The village council went through the emotion process to remove, through lack of attendance, approximately May of 2019. He's given a notice and an opportunity to be heard, he didn't appear or otherwise respond. April 7, at the meeting, the board unanimously ordered removal, and there was an order of removal formally signed and served on May 9 on Mr. Epps. We haven't heard anything from him. The emotion process has been recognized by the North Carolina courts. However, the town was informed by a resident that there could be, we call it, quo warrant to challenge, Latin term, and that is basically to challenge the seat. So somebody could challenge whether you were rightfully appointed, or I guess whether there was a vacancy properly appointed. The village maintains it was. I maintain it was. However, in these types of statutory actions, the village cannot expend resources for legal fees. So if there's a challenge, if you want to, if you're appointed and wanted to respond and challenge that, that would be, and you wanted our attorney, that would be upon you because the state legislator has said governmental entities cannot get involved in those type of actions. Now to proceed with that action, it actually brought by the state, or the attorney general can grant consent. So they had to get consent from the attorney general, and that includes posting a bond for any claims of damages related to the proceeding. I don't know the likelihood of a challenge, but I think if anybody was to challenge, they really need to look at the merits of any challenge to decide if they would move forward. But we did want to give that disclosure and kind of go through the process very quickly. Is that it?
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah. So, hopefully understood that, and there's a lot of discussion amongst ourselves with this. Given that information, are you still willing to continue with the interview?
Sure.
Okay. All right. All right, so in one sentence, describe Marvin to you.
I would say it's a great place to live.
What is your, what would you say your vision for Marvin and his future is?
Well, I would like to see Marvin stay as an open and not overly populated area that my children will want to come back to and possibly continue to live here.
So tell us, you've been here a while. How many years now?
Eleven.
Okay, 11 years. What do you think needs improvement in Marvin?
Well, there's a couple of things that would hit my list of things that could be improved. Number one, I'd like to see, as you all are aware, that I'm chair of the PRG board at this point in time, and that my involvement in the village has been with PRG for the most part, and I'd like to see some more headway on our trail system. Community is important to me, and I feel like that that is going to be one of the best avenues that we can get community together. The other thing that concerns me a great deal is the traffic. I know there's really nothing that we can do about the amount of traffic, but the safety of our citizens with the negligence on the road bothers me. Less than two weeks ago, we had a car roll over in Marvin, catch on fire and burn up. Excessive speed. I see it daily. Those are the two main concerns that I really have. Other than that, I feel like that through this point in time, the current council and all the previous councils have done a pretty decent job about keeping this village from becoming too populated and keeping it an open space that people can enjoy, and I'm just hoping that I can be a part of keeping it going in that same direction.
Okay. And given that, keeping, what do you see your vision as far as accomplishing these improvements? What specifically would you do for, say, the trail system or the traffic, you know, as far as your ideas? What would you want to push forward as?
Well, as far as traffic, I see a need for more law enforcement. I know that there are pros and cons to that, there's cost involved, there's management involved and all that, but as our neighboring communities grow and they force more traffic upon us, and, you know, the way people live today, fast and furious, there's really not much choice in the matter other than to get more law enforcement.
I'm sorry. I knew that was going to happen. Thought I did everything, but I guess I didn't, so.
And as far as the trail system goes, you know, I'd like to be able to try to pursue more avenues of trying to find a way to fund more projects sooner. I've been pleased with what has happened in the last couple of years in regards to our trail system being more of a priority for council. In the past, it wasn't. There was a big stall there for a while, and I'm seeing a lot more progress, and I'd like to continue that moving forward.
Okay. So, here you go, this may be a softball one, but name at least one good thing, at least one thing you dislike about Marvin.
Well, I mean, I enjoy living here. I've been here 11 years, and I don't have a whole lot of complaints about here. I mean, it's a great place to live. This is where I want to raise my kids. I don't have any plans of moving anytime in the next 100 years. The only drawback that I see to Marvin is just our geographical location in regards to being sandwiched between Waxahaw and Charlotte. There's nothing that anybody can do about that. It is what it is, our traffic is produced by being in the middle. So if that's the only drawback there is, I guess there's really not much anybody can do about it.
All right. And feel free, council, as we're talking, if you want to follow up on any questions, please do, and just feel free to interrupt me. Next question would be, how do you feel your qualifications and experience prepare you to serve on the village council?
Well, eight years or so on the PRG board has given me a lot of insight as to how things work around here, and I've gotten to know most of the people that are involved through my years. I have an extensive construction and landscaping background. I know extensive amounts of things about that kind of an area. It's been what I've done for my entire life.
Okay.
So hopefully that experience will give some help to things as we move forward.
What would you say you see the duties of a council member being? What are your duties?
Well, it's a service position. It's, you're working for the people, and you're supposed to be a voice for the people, and, you know, that's the whole purpose, is to be the voice of the people. There's no other, I mean, that's the whole job, is you're the voice of the people, that's, you're put in place to listen to the people and do what the people want.
So given that, I mean, how would you, like, we've done surveys and stuff like that, how would you engage, like, I mean, that's the biggest thing, is like, how do we know what the people want? So how would you personally?
I think surveys are great, but being personally involved in the community is, I think, is probably the best, you know, making a point to meet people, talk with people, listen to people, and actually listen to people. Hearing people is one thing, actually listening to people is another, and I think that personally being involved, our community is not that big that we can't be personally involved with the community as a whole. You run into people a lot. I personally work and live in this area, and I have personal interactions with a lot of people, whether they're actually in Marvin or in adjacent communities to Marvin, and I hear a lot of concerns and wishes and wish-nots and so on and so forth. You know, there is no perfect way to make every single person happy because everybody has their own opinion. The only thing we can do is pull from everybody's opinions and make the best choice we can for the majority.
Name three major issues facing the village in the next 24 months, if you could.
I don't really know how to answer that.
I mean, we can come back to it if you want to think about it, you know, it's just three major issues that you see, we can make improvements on that, or this or that, so.
That I'm not prepared to answer.
Okay, that's all right. All right, we can come back to it later if you want. What measures would you take to resolve a conflict between yourself and other members of council? And maybe give an example of a conflict and how you would work to resolve it. So if there was disagreement within the council, what measures would you take to resolve it? And give me an example of how you would work to resolve it.
Well, you know, conflict is never a good thing, and everybody has an opinion. I guess to start with, I respect everybody's opinion to begin with, so as to head off a conflict before it even begins. But, you know, if there is a conflict, you step back, you take a breath, and you talk about it calmly, and, you know, if that doesn't solve it, then I, you know, I don't know, I'm not, certainly not going to be one that's aggressive or combative, that's, it's a walk-away situation, leave it alone. There's obviously, there's always going to be conflicts, you know, that people have, it's about how you handle them before they get out of proportion and...
Can you give an example, say, where you had conflict with maybe a customer of yours or something like that, and how you worked to resolve it?
Well, I mean, there's, you try to come to a compromise. You talk through it, try to come to a compromise. There's always a way to resolve things, it's just are both parties willing to, is I guess the question. I know from my experience on the PRG board, we, I don't think in the eight years that I've been on that board have we ever had an impasse. We've always worked on things together, came to a consensus, and then voted on.
Are you willing to listen to public about their complaint or issue? And what steps would you take to resolve that issue or complaint?
Absolutely. I'm open to listening to any complaints or concerns. That's the only reason, that's the only way council is going to know if there is an issue, is if they listen. And then discuss with the rest of the council at the meetings, and think about it in a very transparent manner. That's what we're here for.
If you're chairs in the service board, do you have some items in mind that you would like to see council address?
Well, as I stated before, the main things that I'd like to address are the, you know, traffic and, you know, working on building our trail system and our community, making it a stronger community, that's...
As far as services, we're always told we don't have many services. We're kind of a paper town, if you will. What additional service should Marvin provide, if any, in your opinion?
Well, I've heard a lot of the same thing, and, you know, I think that, for myself, I think that a garbage service would be a good thing to have, to have consistency. It reduces the amount of truck traffic. It could potentially reduce costs to the individual. It's a good service to have. The other, you know, and along with traffic control as, you know, more police.
Okay. Good. So tell us about your feelings of development and what Marvin may be lacking, if any.
Development, I'm kind of conservative on development. I don't want to be overpopulated. I am not opposed to this downtown district that's been proposed. I am certainly not opposed to the Providence Road Corridor being commercial, plenty of commercial out there as it is. But I don't, as far as any more density, I don't want to see any more density than we have already.
Just sorry, I'm just finishing. And just a few more questions. What do you see your responsibility, see as your responsibility of spending money? Which I assume would be taxpayer dollars and stuff. What do you see as your responsibility for that?
Being as fertile as possible, spending it in the best, paying for your buck, if you will, getting the most out of what we have to use, and that's...
And do you anticipate any difficulties in participating as a fully engaged council member?
Absolutely not. Like, my track record will prove that I'm absolutely willing to give as much time as I need.
Okay. So you've looked out at our schedule when we meet, we meet every second Tuesday and every third Thursday of the month?
Last Thursday.
Last Thursday of the month, okay. So no issues there?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions from council members? Bob, I'll start with you.
Yeah. Just to ask you a question, how long have you been on the PRG board?
I believe it's around eight years.
Consistently? You've been on the consistently?
I took a break after, I think it was about four years ago, I think, for about a year.
Okay. Thank you.
Jamie or council member?
Nope, I'm good. Do you have any questions for us?
Not right now.
Okay. Terrific. I think we're good. We're actually ahead of schedule, not by just a few minutes, which is a good thing, so we're not running late.
So are the behind.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, and...
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
We will definitely be getting back to candidates on our decision. All right, good to see you.
Thanks for coming in.
An elbow bump you, by the way. All right. So we'll just stay ahead of schedule if you want, or you want to take a few minutes or go on to any discussing?
What I would do procedurally, is you have an agenda that was...
Oh, so at 4:30?
No, you can amend your agenda into state, more fluid schedule, one after the other, but we would have to make sure to start getting ahead to contact the others.
Well, we can always wait then, too.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
It's only a few minutes.
Yeah, I think most of them are going to take pretty close. I was watching, ended up like 4:15 or 4:20.
That one got pretty well, though, I mean, with the questions and stuff.
Y'all might want to leave over.
I'm sorry?
Y'all might want a little bit of a break, too, through your notes and then...
Oh, okay.
Did you want us to manage?
Yeah, if y'all were going to move forward and start going off schedule, I would amend the agenda. And y'all aren't taking action, but the last time we did, you can confirm and ratify councilman Marcalise's participation remotely, I think you're voting, but just as a precaution.
Do you want to say that now?
Yeah, and if you're going to do both, do both, yes, let's do that, I'm wishing.
Okay, so, so do I seem to make a motion to allow Bob to participate remotely?
Yeah, to continue.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to allow councilmember Bob Marcalise to participate remotely during the special meeting on May 28 from here on through the interview process.
And for the record, quorum, we have full quorum here with Bob participating virtually, and both Mayor Protem Vandenberg and councilmember Jamie Lyon are here and present for full quorum. We are a little ahead of schedule right now, so...
Would you like to make a motion, or that motion's on the table, so let's do that one first?
Okay. Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to move to, I don't know, what do you want me to say?
amend the agenda.
amend the agenda to be more fluid with the start times of the interviews. If they're here early and we get done early, then we'll just continue on, and if we're not, then we'll just go on the times that are set.
Further discussion?
That's great.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion pass, aye, motion passes. All right. So we are at 4:26, and I see we have Christopher Smith here, so I'm going to ask him to come sit up. And, so, before we get started, I'm going to basically ask you the questions, any follow-up will be from council or myself, and, but before we start, we do want to bring to attention an issue that our attorney would like to bring up.
Okay. This is a vacancy for the seat formerly held by Robert Epps. Village council went through a procedure called an emotion process to remove Mr. Epps, basically for no attendance since May of 2019. He was given a notice and an opportunity to be heard. He didn't appear for the proceedings, and then April 7, the board voted unanimously to remove him. There was an order confirming the terms of that that was served upon Mr. Epps on May 9. There's been no response to that. The emotion procedure is recognized in North Carolina, it has been done by other municipalities in North Carolina. However, the village was informed by a resident that they may challenge the appointment of anybody going through, so we wanted to disclose that. The challenge would be through quo warrant to action, and that is an action where an interested party can challenge the right of the person to continue in their elected or appointed position. I think they would need to really look at the merits before they file any action, because I do believe this village council acted properly. But if they were to move forward, first, the action is brought in the name of the state, so the attorney general generally brings it. However, the attorney general can provide consent to allow an individual or individuals to proceed, provided they oppose security for any costs associated with that action that may be imposed upon the attorney general's office. The other point that we want to make is, under those statutes, the village is precluded from using public funds for legal counsel. So if you were appointed and there was some challenge, and you wanted to, one defendant or two hire a legal counsel, that would be an individual expense. So we wanted to just let everybody know how we got here, where the process is, and there was that mentioned by a resident, it could happen, just full disclosure.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Knowing that information, Chris, are you willing to continue with the interview? Yes? Okay. All right, so it's basically questions I'm going to ask, and I have a little bit of all of it. So in one sentence, describe Marvin to you.
Marvin is a wonderful village in northwest Union County. It's home to a diverse set of residents, wonderful schools, beautiful homes, and a quaint and lovely suburban lifestyle.
For you, what's your vision of Marvin and its future?
I'm sorry?
What is your vision for Marvin and its future?
I could envision Marvin continuing to be a wonderful place to raise a family, to remain once you've, once your kids have flown the coop, and where people can enjoy the Saturday afternoon, walking along well-manicured greenways with comfort in knowing that they are safe and secure in a wonderful neighborhood, a beautiful village.
Tell us what you believe needs improvement in Marvin.
I think that we can collectively put a little more effort and resources into expanding greenways and parks and amenities of that sort for our residents. I think that in partnership with the appropriate other governmental entities, we can manage the traffic through Marvin. I think that a lot of the traffic in Marvin is not generated by Marvin residents, it's... It's other folks in other parts of the county coming through to get to Charlotte. And I think that there are steps, again, in partnership with other governmental units that we can take to mitigate the traffic situation and the risks that go along with that.
Okay. So what would your vision be to accomplish these particular improvements?
I think that we could endeavor to set aside some money to allocate and acquire land for greenways, to expand the Marvin Loop, to continue doing that, and to perhaps create another park for residents to enjoy. The shape of Marvin is a little bit long and narrow, although the current park is centrally located. It's actually not in Marvin. And I think it would be difficult to make a greenway that goes directly to it. So otherwise, I think that it might be worthwhile to take a look at having a park that is connected to existing and future greenways.
All right. So name at least one good thing and one thing you dislike about Marvin.
One good thing I like about Marvin is the diversity of the residents. I live in Marvin Creek, which is a large neighborhood, very diverse. I have a lot of friends there, and their backgrounds are from geographically and ethnically diverse. And it's one of the things I really love about Marvin. One of the things that I don't like about Marvin is perhaps, like I said before, the traffic. It can be tough to connect between the sides of Marvin Creek. As you, as we all are aware, it's a bit of a safety issue trying to get across the road carts during times of the day. So definitely the traffic. And I know that's not completely within the scope of the council to be able to do a whole lot about traffic, but it is something that we can try and at least communicate to our residents that we can work with NCDOT and other neighboring communities to help mitigate that in some way.
Okay. So how do you feel your qualifications and experience prepare you to serve on the village council?
Well, I've been a member of the planning board since February of last year. And I think that participated in a lot of the planning activities as a function of that role. I was a candidate for mayor in the last election. I'm actively engaged in attending council meetings, either virtually or in person, and enjoy doing that. You know, I have a personal relationship, for better or worse, with almost everybody who's associated with the village government. And I can honestly say that, you know, self-selecting for participation in the governments and council meetings has been enlightening and useful, and I think that I can add a lot of value.
Okay. So what do you see as the duties of a council member?
Duties of a council member are to review and consider changes to the nature and fabric of Marvin, to consider the needs of the residents, and to do so in an honest, transparent way that consistently demonstrates integrity and an understanding that through process, almost anything can be achieved, but there are limits. And to just to be open and upfront and fair with residents and with each other.
Okay. So you look at Marvin. What do you see as your three major issues facing the village in the next 24 months?
I think clearly the village hall, the village center. And if you look at the survey that the residents filled out last fall, definitely green spaces are top of mind. And I think, if I recall correctly, one of the topmost issues cited in the survey is a resident desire.
Okay. Let me ask a follow-up question on that. So three major issues. You said village hall and village center. In particular, you know, I'm sure you're aware, if you've attended meetings, we struggle with location and stuff like that. What, tell me more about what you do to move that project forward. What do you envision?
Seems the biggest hurdle is the cost. The land acquisition cost is one, and then the construction cost is the other factor. We do have the lot that was donated by the Toll Brothers Development for the preserve at no cost. And it does have the advantage of having certain infrastructure components already in place. On the other hand, it's a big lot, larger than is needed for the village hall properly. And therefore, to develop it would require a lot of money. So I think that if the plan, I think collectively, if the plan is to put it there, then we're going to have to set aside some funds. Otherwise, we'd have to identify an alternative. I think that, and I've spent a lot of time in this building and in this room in particular, it's substandard, it's not adequate for the function of a growing village. And so I think that there is no alternative but to change the venue, change the location. What I think is lacking is just a coherent and articulated plan for what to do. I think that is the number one thing that the council, any council, really needs to get done is, in the near term especially, is to get a plan, just to make a decision on what's going to be done. And then you can build the follow-on activities and the work streams around that plan. So I think it's just draw a line in the sand and say, this is what we're going to do, and then execute. On the, on the village center?
Yeah.
I'll be completely honest with you, I'm indifferent. I think that I agree with most residents that small-scale development is, if the village center is going to be a thing, then small-scale commercial development is appropriate. Anything large-scale, I wouldn't necessarily be in favor of. But then again, we have to consider the property owners and nearby property owners as well, people who are affected, neighborhoods that are directly affected and adjacent to the village center should be, their needs and desires should be considered as well. But in terms of, you know, what to put in there, I actually don't really care as long as the content fits with the nature of the village and the ordinances that we have established already. So obviously, we wouldn't want to see a Burger King or anything drive-through, fast-food restaurant. I think we'd be interested in that. But other commercial concerns that fit within, you know, the small-scale concept, I think are perfectly appropriate.
Okay. Let's see. What measures would you take to resolve a conflict between yourself and other members of council? And can you give an example of a conflict, then, how you would work to resolve it?
I think any, any interaction that's getting sideways should be fact-based and not personal. To the extent that an interaction is getting heated, I think it's best for the parties involved to just kind of dial it back and step away, come back to it. If it's actually a material issue that is germane to the business of the planning board or council, then it'll have to be addressed at some point. But I think when calmer heads are focused on it. You know, I have no shortage of examples of interactions that have gone sideways. And I think that, for the most part, I handle myself as best I can and just work within the confines of facts. And try to just drop it if it's getting obnoxious and off-topic.
Okay. Can you give, if you have a lot of examples, could you give one and tell us how you'd resolve it, a specific one?
Well, the last planning board meeting began with a conversation around the appropriateness of third-party communications, wherein I had responded to a post on Nextdoor with something I had seen and we discussed in planning board. I commented on it as not being remarkably different than things we had discussed, something about a plan. And so the chairman of the planning board brought it up. We discussed it. And despite, and as far as the interaction with myself and John Jones goes, I felt like he was inferring something that wasn't there. All I had said was facts. Something looking like plans were presented to me in the planning board by the town planner, and I just commented on, these look like plans I've seen.
So just to be, I'll dig in a little bit more on that. So the plans with the labels of places that we would want in there, or is it just the area?
The area. Yeah, the area.
Okay.
And it was interesting because we then discussed for about three hours plans that looked a lot like that right after that part of the meeting. I more or less let it go. Mike Lavell was piping in, but, you know, I'll let that go, too.
So I just thought I'd carry on that end because I didn't listen to the last planning board meeting. So they felt it was fine to use a third-party communication? Or what did they decide, or what ended up happening as far as resolving it?
To my recollection, John Jones stated at the end of the discussion that we have an understanding that if you were going to make comments, that it not be positioned as being, as a function of a planning board or planning board member. And instead, comments would be positioned as being, as a resident of Marvin.
Okay.
That's how it was resolved.
Okay. Speaking of the public, are you wanting to listen to public and their complaint or issues? What steps would you take to resolve said issue or complaint?
Well, that's one of the primary functions of a municipal government, is to understand, to listen, and resolve issues faced by residents. There's generally a process associated with that. So if somebody brings an issue up to me as a council member, I would bring it back to staff and council as an issue and ensure it's properly logged and that the appropriate staff folks, and if there's a legal concern, the legal counsel would be aware of it. And then we would promote its resolution through the established, you know, processes for resolving issues.
So in a situation like this, are you saying what steps you would take to resolve it? But say you heard a complaint issue and you brought it to council, and council wasn't necessarily on board with that issue. So how do you, because I, I think, Bob, I probably could call you out on this one because before I knew you, I think you had a complaint issue and we came out, but we certainly weren't able to resolve it for you. So now that you're on this side of the fence, I guess that's a question I have for you. If you're not always going to be able to solve a residence problem. And I'm pointing out to him because I remember having to go to his house and seeing an issue, and we couldn't resolve it for him.
Sure. And Tullamore has been, there are folks in Tullamore who feel like their issues haven't been addressed or too slow in being addressed. So there's no shortage of that. And I think it's important, right, to be open and honest with residents that not every issue can be resolved. It's not every issue is within the scope of the village to resolve, things like the traffic. It's not completely within the powers of the municipal government to resolve traffic issues. There are things we can do, but fundamentally, you can't stop traffic. You can't close off the village. And the same with Bob's issue with the drainage. It may not be something that can be immediately addressed. And I would tell any resident right up front that I personally can't resolve it. It's a collective effort to resolve anything. And that it'll get a fair, it'll get, it'll get, you know, the light of day, and everybody will get to collectively understand and work towards resolving it. And it'll be done in an open way, in an open forum. And if it can't be resolved, then that resident will have had the opportunity to see their issue addressed.
Okay. So if you're choosing to be served on this board, do you have some items in mind that you would like to see council address?
You know, I think a lot of the issues that are top of mind for residents are, can really be, if you look at the root cause of some of the issues over the past few years, I think you can draw a direct line to transparency and openness, communication. I think here, especially in the last couple of weeks, this council's taken steps to, positive steps to addressing that. And so I'm happy to see that. But I think that letting go of the past is something that I think would benefit the council going forward. There isn't a body man. There are only residents who care. And so I think that, you know, if I were sitting on council, I think it'd go a long way to helping resolve some of those issues and moving forward. And I think that, you know, a lot of the residents feel discomfort with not the activities of the government, but the tenor, the tone, and the way things have evolved. Not really so much the content, but the form of it. And so I think that there is an opportunity for the council to move forward from here on out.
So I want to kind of dig a little deeper into that. So you said letting go of the past and stuff. Do you, do you see this, do you feel that current councils or past councils have brought these things upon themselves? Or do you feel that maybe misinformation is being given out there that, you know, that is nowhere near that? So it's like, you know, we're big boys and girls and stuff. We can take a lot of people saying things, you know, but when you see the stuff that's out there and stuff, I mean, how do you, how do you see, if you become on council and stuff, how do you see you addressing those individuals, for whatever reason, they're going to disagree with you, and then maybe just start to say whatever they want to say that may or may not be true?
Well, I think it begins with being open and transparent to begin with. Information of any kind fills a void, right? If there's a void, it'll get filled. So I think it needs to be proactive, right? The council needs to be proactive in helping residents understand what's happening, why, what timeline, and how much it's going to cost. And I think the vast majority of residents, and the ones I've spoken to specifically, aren't interested in partisan politics. They're not interested in personalities. They just want to know what's going on. They, you know, folks, a lot of the folks I've spoken to aren't even aware of personality issues or events of the past. They don't care. They just want to know what's going on. And I think that being highly communicative is better than not. Being transparent with the issues and actually prioritizing things, stating what the priority is. And I think moving on time scales that people can mentally picture in their mind when things are happening is very important as well.
Okay. Services. You know what we have? You've been around for a while. What would you, what additional services do you think Marvin should provide, if any?
You know, Marvin is, I think, unique in a lot of ways as compared to our neighbors, Weddington and Wesley Chapel and Waxahaw. That we're small-scale. We have a small-scale mindset. and Waxahaw, that, we're, we're small scale, we have a small-scale mindset, very suburban, very, almost rural for where we're located, so close to Charlotte. So, I think that in the spirit of low taxes and that rural fabric and that rural nature, I think services should be, you know, are probably going to remain limited. I think moving towards more security and getting the extra sheriff is a huge accomplishment, and I think that that's cited as one of the, the main desires of residents in the service. So, security, and I think just keeping the council's finger on the pulse of how that's going is going to be very important. In terms of other services, I can envision a future where Marvin provides waste services, and I agree with the prior interviewee that it would reduce, having it all on the same day, would reduce truck traffic, which in turn reduces wear and tear on the roads, that we're now responsible for the subdivisions, so I can envision that, you know, that's, you know, I've heard you say many times, we're not in the road building business, or we hadn't been in the road building business. Well, now we are, and we're not in the waste management business, but I think that's a service that a lot of people can wrap their minds around and would appreciate. Some, some residents would honestly appreciate that, and so that's something I could envision.
So, what are your feelings on development, and what Marvin may be lacking, if any? Development in general, and then what we're lacking, if any?
Yeah, well, there's not a lot of, a lot of Marvin left to develop. I would, I would not be in favor of, again, of high density, but that's not an option anyway, Marvin. So, I wouldn't go so far as to change the existing ordinances around density and, and home size, or lot size, I should say. But I would encourage development that follows the established path of conservation areas that would enable flexibility for developers. And I think that, you know, we've had some success with, with the over 55 developments. I'm not opposed to, to, to those. I think they fit within the nature of Marvin, and especially in the philosophy that, that I subscribe to, which is, it's a great place to raise your kids, but we don't want people to move away just because they have these huge homes now, and, and they're empty. So, I think that is a logical option for, for development. You know, we talked about the Village Center, again, I would keep it small-scale and.
Small-scale what?
The Village Center, small-scale, small-scale commercial, limited commercial. And I think that if that's what the residents want, then I'm fine with that as well.
Sorry about that.
And I think there was a second part to the question, and it's.
Just what families are development and what Marvin may be lacking, if anything, so.
Well, I think that, definitely green space. I think Marvin does a pretty good job, and I think the Marvin Loop as it exists now is a wonderful amenity. In the last couple of months, with everybody being home, I had, it's, it's amazing how many people are out there using it. And it got, you know, even prior to the pandemic, I think it was a well-appreciated, well-used feature. Effer Park is also a really nice amenity, but I think we're, I think we can and should devote more resources to, to green spaces and to making those, those trails more connected and more, more available, longer.
Okay. So, what do you see as your responsibility of spending, funding your sense for taxpayer dollars?
Well, it's, it goes without saying, it's the stewardship of the residence money that is the number-one job of the council. And that should be decisions about how to spend, tax funds should be driven by the needs of the residents and by the, the willingness of folks to live within a certain tax tolerance. I know that we just voted to increase taxes by a penny, and that, that goes, as I understand it, pretty much completely toward the extra sheriff. That is a perfect example of, of listening to residents, allocating resources, and making hard decisions to accomplish what the collective desire is. Everybody said they wanted more security, they wanted more visible patrols by the sheriff, and that costs money. And so, it's a tough decision to raise taxes, and so, the collective desire, though, I think mandated it. Is there, you know, are there other things that people want? Yeah, green ones, and I think that if, it goes back to my earlier point with planning and drawing a line in the sand and saying, this is what we're going to do, and we're going to execute it, and it may, it may cost money, if that's a collective desire, then, then, then do it. But the important thing is to just draw a line in the sand and, and then execute. If it takes longer to do it because you have to allocate resources more slowly, or funds more slowly, then that's fine. But do it in a way that people can understand and say that that's what you're doing.
So, if I were to give you an example on that, so we have a budget of the Village Town Hall, initially 600,000, and the bids, the lowest bid came in at 1.7, we did move it up to a million. How do you, what do you, what do you do with that? What do you, what are your feelings on that?
There are, in the grand scheme of things, there are, that's not a huge amount of money for the facility, right? There are homes that, in this neighborhood, that are million-dollar homes, so it's not out of the realm of, okay, that's what it is. I don't know where the original quote was, but 600,000 or 700,000 for an all-in price for the town hall. Maybe that was realistic years ago, but I don't know that it was ever a real number anyway. It wasn't until we got the bids that we now know how much this is going to cost. I think in my interactions with, with residents, the expectation is, is that's where Village Hall is going to be, and it was assigned there for a long time and said so. If, you know, if, if money's the issue, then just scale it out over a period of time. Do it, do like you would do with your own budget, and just don't do it all at once, do it a bit at a time. I understand that you're looking at alternatives as well, and you have to have an apples-to-apples comparison, right? So, if building a Village Hall next to this one is marginally less expensive, but materially less desirable in one way or another, for example, that it's a long-term lease instead of owning the property, then that needs to be considered. There are qualitative and quantitative factors to consider. If, you know, if it's 1.7 million dollars, so that's what, that's what it is. If, again, I'll go, I'll go back to the, the point I made where, say that's what you're going to do, and then do it, and if it has to be staged over a period of time, or maybe a special levy or something, then do that. But just make a decision and execute.
And then, our last question is, anticipate any difficulties in participating as a fully engaged council member, given, you know, the schedules every second Tuesday and last Thursday of every month, and no issues?
No issues.
Any other questions from council? Bob? Can't see you now. Can you hear us?
You can hear me, right?
We can.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, I lost picture, but that's okay, I can hear, I'm fine.
Do you have any questions for us?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right. Well, that'll conclude that, thank you for coming and sharing your information with us.
Yes, thank you very much.
We are right back on schedule here. Do we need, anyone, anyone good?
I'm good.
Anyone need a break, or?
I'm fine, yeah, Robert, I'm sorry, my screen all of a sudden turned into, I could only see me.
Ah, yes. I made a mistake in fixing something, but I think it should be fixed now, right?
Yes, it is, thank you.
Okay, great.
All right. So, with that, we're showing five o'clock, is that correct?
Yep.
I believe we have our next.
Ready for me?
Yep, candidate, thank you for coming. All right, Angel, I'll be, obviously, leading the discussions, or may be, may or may not be additional questions asked by council, but before we start, I'm going to turn it over to the attorney.
Hello, you may have already heard this, I think you're here, but I'm going to try to be consistent, because there being consistent with all their statements, as you probably know, there's a vacancy in this seat, and that was the seat formerly held by Robert Epps. Village Council went through the motion process for removal due to lack of attendance from approximately May 2019 until the vote occurred in April. Mr. Epps was given a notice and opportunity to be heard, did not appear, and he was served with the, after unanimous decision for removal, he was served with that order on April 9th, and we haven't heard back. However, we have been informed from a resident that there could be a challenge for whoever is appointed, or whoever is appointed, and that would be a quo warrantil action. That is an action where somebody challenges the right of the person to hold either an elected or appointed position. With that, they would really need to study the merits of the action, because I do believe that Village Council acted within the law in the motion process, has been used by other local governments, municipalities in North Carolina, and upheld by the judiciary. Generally, the action is brought by the attorney general, because it's a state action, however, the person can get the consent, but they have to get the consent of the attorney general before bringing a private action. And the last thing about the statutory scheme for the quo warrantil is, because it's involving a seat of local government, the village can't spend legal fees in their defense, so we wanted to make that disclosure to all of the candidates at the beginning of the process. And that's our, that's our disclosure once again for you.
Thank you.
All right, that being said, are you willing to continue with the idea?
I'm good.
All right, good enough, all right. So, how long have you been in Marvin?
Almost two years.
Two years?
And we love it here. South Park, my husband and I are both Charlotteans.
Good deal.
Yeah, we wish we would have moved here years ago.
Locals, yeah, that's great. So, in one sentence, being a two-year resident, how would you describe Marvin to you?
Um, it's home. We have great neighbors, great schools, low taxes, it's a wonderful community, we love it here. That's probably too many sentences, but.
That's all right. I think we would all concur with that.
Yeah, it's great here.
And so, being, you've only been here two years, but you're a Charlotte resident, you've seen all this growth and stuff like that, what do you, what's your vision for, if you were open, you're going to stay here for a while?
Oh, yeah, we're here, yeah.
What's your vision for the future of Marvin, or would you like to see?
You know, I mean, I, I think it's a beautiful place to live. You know, I mean, the thing that I love about Marvin is that it's close enough to the big city, but you don't have to live in it, you know? It's, it's, so, I mean, I, I'd like to see certain things, like maybe a library here, maybe a post office here. No offense to Waxahaw, but when we moved here, we, we wanted to use Marvin and not Waxahaw as our address, so.
By the way, you can.
We do.
No, they're two separate, just so you know, because I asked that question. And it should be on your deed, by the way.
Well, but, but like, when, when you GPS, you don't GPS to Marvin, you have to GPS from our house in Providence State to Waxahaw, and I'm like, but we want to live in Marvin, so. But it'd be nice to have a post office, I, we probably have no control over that, but it'd be nice to have a library, a post office, you know, a sheriff's office, you know, like a little one, something like that, and obviously, the town hall.
Anything else?
Well, you know, I, I'm a former, I, I had to, I had a business in Pineville that.
I saw that.
I closed recently.
Okay.
And, you know, have thought about possibly doing something closer to home with it, but it would have to be the right circumstance, you know, traffic is a concern, for sure.
All right. So, that being said, what do you, other than traffic, what do you believe needs improvement in Marvin?
Communication.
Okay.
That, that, I mean, I think traffic can be hairy sometimes, but I think the traffic circles have helped a lot, and I can't wait for this one to get started, over there.
Got some unfortunate news on that.
Oh, no.
May of 2024, now?
Oh, really?
2022.
Oh, man.
Hang in there.
Well, we did just send an email out with that communication.
And that's not us, that is the state, so just a heads up on that.
But yeah, but really, just, you know, communication, I mean, I'm sure that y'all are aware of that petition that's going around and stuff, and it seems to be that there are very, and you know, I'm kind of an outsider looking in, because I, I don't, you know, I felt kind of stupid when the guy was here, sitting here before me and the guy before that, because there's a history there, and there's not one with me, and so, how things that you're talking about, they don't resonate with me. What I will say is that I think public service can be a thankless job. You're obviously not in for the money, you know, so, and sometimes you have to make hard decisions, but I'm not sure that they're always communicated the way that they should be. You know, when we first moved here, one of the best things we got was, was like a newsletter, it was the Marvin Village, I don't even remember what it is, but it's hanging on my refrigerator, and it had great information on it for somebody new like us that, you know, where was the closest post office, and, you know, just stuff that was going on in Marvin. And, you know, since deciding to, to apply for this, I've sought out other ways to get information, but, you know, it would be nice, as just from a resident perspective, to get things that I can hold on to that I can put on my refrigerator instead of going to a website, because I don't know, you know, when every meeting is, or, you know, what's on the agenda. It would be nice, just as a, as a layperson, not in, on the council, to know what's going on and why you guys are doing, choosing to do the things that you're choosing to do, to kind of counteract the Nextdoor stuff and the petitions and stuff, because the truth of the matter is, people don't know your side of it.
I think that's, I think that's fair, and I think we've been addressing that, unfortunately, if you've ever been in government before.
I have not, no.
Unfortunately, things are decided by committee, I mean, it's fine to say, yeah, I want to respond to this, but you usually need a, a board to agree on how you're going to respond, and, and we don't have a very big budget where we have things that we're working on, and I would say, stay tuned, stuff like that, I think you're going to see come back, so.
That's great.
But that's, that's a great answer, and I think you're spot on when it comes to the communication, we've, we've lacked that.
And that's something that, I owned an ad agency for 15 years and was a media before that, so that is something that maybe I could help with.
Okay. So, that being said, your vision and accomplished, this improvement would be what, other than, I assume, your expertise in ad?
I mean, I, I.
What specifically would you?
I mean, I would even, I would even put out a newsletter once a quarter, you know, just, or, you know, once every six months, just letting people know the things that you're working on and, and why you are working on them. You know, everybody has opinions, and, you know, like you just said, the state moved the traffic circle to 2022.
It was just announced today, by the way.
Yeah, so, I mean, that, but I mean, that's something that, you know, it affects us all, and we're all like, oh, man, that stinks. But, you know, just being on top of it that way and just saying, hey, look, we're, we're trying to work for you, and this is what happened, and, you know, let's focus on this. I think that you have to put a lot of positive things out there for people to feel good about.
So, not everyone gets their news from the Village Newsletter, or what you're saying. How else, what, what other venues do you see are appropriate?
Well, there's lots, I mean, you can, you know, definitely promote the website more, and that's something that's free, obviously, so it doesn't cost a lot, but direct people there. You know, and then, you know, there are different places online too, that you can promote what's going on. And at the parks even, or the park. I just found out about Effer Park not that long ago.
Yeah.
I didn't even know that there was one. Now, granted, again, I'm a newbie, so, you know, there's a lot I don't know, but that's cool that we have one.
Very good. So, name a good thing and name something that you dislike about Marvin.
We love the schools.
Schools.
Love them, love the teachers. I would say probably the traffic, but even, I mean, compared to living in Charlotte, oh, my God, this is nothing, so. I, I, there's not much that I.
So, if you had been here two years, you experienced that turn if you came from Providence State?
I did, I did.
You were one of the many sitting in that, yeah.
But it was very short. They started, and in fact, it was funny, because I didn't know how to get home when they started the construction down on the first.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I lived here maybe like two months.
Get on Waze and figure it out.
Yeah, and I was like, how do I go home? I don't even know. But, yeah, it, it was, it was crowded, but the traffic circles are great.
Made for a fun rural drive.
Yeah, you're not kidding. But the horse farms are great.
Yeah, they are. So how do you feel your current qualifications, experience prepare you to serve on the Village Council?
Well, I definitely think I can help with communication. Um, I'm a people person. I don't have a problem talking to people. So I'm, I'm happy to listen to any concerns that residents have. And, you know, I think I have a fresh perspective. I don't have any baggage here, because I haven't lived here long enough, I don't know anybody. So I would hope that, you know, sometimes a fresh perspective is a, is good. Change is good sometimes.
So in your ad businesses you had, do you have experience in websites?
Mm-hmm.
And running websites?
Mm-hmm.
And as a council member being, having been in government, what do you see the duties of a council member being?
Um, well, I think economic development or just development in general of the community. You know, doing things that the people want you to do, because you obviously represent them in what's in their best interest. Um, you know, I, I think keeping Marvin as wonderful as it is, but maybe tweaking it a little bit to make it an even better place to be, but.
So can you name a few things that you would do?
Like I said, um, library, post office, town hall. I wish there was something we could do about those Goshern cyclists, like even having like a cycling path or something, which maybe has nothing to do.
They say the same about us. I wish there was something to do about the town without expanding our roads.
I, you know, it's like when they have like 50 of them. You can't get past them, it's like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of money and widening the road, I guess.
Exactly.
Being that you're a newbie and stuff, what would you say the three major issues we're facing in the villages right now in the next 24 months, next two years?
Again, traffic, I think, is probably the worst. Um, and it's really, I mean, living in Charlotte is nothing. Um, it is frustrating coming down and taking a left. Thank God there's a sheriff there when school's in session. That's nice.
When you're coming home and.
When you come down Marvin and then taking a left on Newtown?
So I got a little secret for you.
Please.
Okay. When you're coming home, throw on Waze and just look, dial into that corner. Usually someone's identified a police officer there. If they're not, they won't be there. But if they're there, you'll see a police officer. I do the same thing, because I either go at the back or I go straight down Marvin, because I know there's an officer there, because if it's not, you're gonna be waiting a while. But it is what it is. And it, it's not under our control. It's a state. It's issues like that, but, you know. So, yeah, traffic, what else?
I mean, I, I love it here. I don't, I'm just not jaded. I don't know. I love my neighbors. Um, I, I really don't know. I love it here. So I really can't say a whole lot that I think needs improvement. I mean, I know, obviously, you probably want a Newtown hall. I get that. That would be nice. But, um, I, I just, I don't see anything too bad about this place.
I would agree with you. We go, we move slowly here, government.
And that's okay.
So, I'm sure in your life you've had conflict. What measures would you take to resolve a conflict between you and other members of a council? So you're in a meeting and whether it gets heated or not, but you just disagree. What, you know, and you have conflict on that day. And if you can give an example of how you would work to resolve that?
Um, probably go buy my beer after and just talk it out. I don't like drama. You know, we're, we're all, we all are neighbors and hopefully friends, so just talk to each other. But beer is a good thing, too.
Beer's always a good thing. I say. Especially that, the flavored kind, the craft ones.
Yep.
Sorry about my writing here. So, you've mentioned you're a people person. And a lot about being a people person is being a good listener. Do you think you'll have any issues listening to public? And what steps would you take to resolve the issues? You may have been here when I talked about Robert having an issue when he was just a town person and we couldn't solve it. We had no authority to solve it using taxpayer dollars. So how, how do you see yourself handling or listening to public about their complaints? And what steps would you take to resolve? And if you couldn't resolve it, where do you end it at?
Well, I think for me, I would need to learn exactly what my job entails as a city council person. And so that I'm very clear on that, I can communicate that. And just let people know what I can and can't do for them. And, you know, obviously, I'm, I'm willing to listen and learn. And if I can help, I will. And if I can't, I'll explain why I can't. And, I mean, that's really all you can do. Again, I, I go back to communication. That's the key to everything.
I have a saying when I, it's my turn to speak and I speak a lot, right, Kim?
Yes.
Yeah. I have a saying, in the opinion of one, because that's all I am, is an opinion of one. And there's five of us here talking about issues and stuff, so. If you are chosen to serve this board, upon this board, do you have any, some items in mind that you would like to see council specifically address?
That we can do, because obviously, the traffic circle is not now, that I just learned. Um, you know, I mean, I, I'm interested to find out, you know, again, on that petition, they had the, um, this proposed development. I'm interested to find out what that's about. Um, you know, as a former retail shop owner, that's, that's gonna be a good thing.
Just, so you got some information from?
There's a petition.
I know, no, no, I know, but you got information from the village on this? Or are you, it's just a petition that came to your house? Okay.
That's all I saw.
Okay.
And so, um, yeah, and I'd like to know more about it. You know, I'm, I'm open to economic development if it makes sense. Um, I think that, you know, any kind of development you have to do intelligently and you have to do your due diligence and, you know, consider traffic and, you know, but, you know, especially for commercial development, that's tax revenue that helps us do more things, so.
Tax revenue, if we had more development, you mean?
Yeah, but it just has to be smart, you know?
Unfortunately, a lot of people don't realize all the, anything you earn in taxes on the development goes to Monroe. Then Monroe divides it up based on your population.
See, I didn't know that. That doesn't quite fit there.
I didn't know it either when I first started. So it's like, you know, so the incentive to do development isn't necessarily there as far as paying for security and stuff like that. But that's why I think a lot of us feel little or little development is a good thing and it's gotta be done, done right.
Right.
Services. So you've only been here two years. Um, probably realize we don't, other than officers that you will see. We provide some, what other additional services?
I agreed with the gentleman before me. I would love to see trash. Love, love, love that, because they are, there are some crappy trash pickup places around here. I mean, bad. So it would be really nice if, if that was something that we could do for everybody. My parents live in Waxaw and they have Waxaw trash. And it seems to work well for them. And living in Charlotte, we have.
It's called Waxon Trash?
No, I don't know what it is.
I don't know, because I was like, I haven't looked into them yet.
I'll tell you what, I have been through active, they're terrible. I have been through, God bless America, they're terrible. Um, we just started with Waste Pro and we're very happy with them so far, so far. Um, you know, there's just no customer service. Again, it goes back to communication. Um, there's just not a lot of really good customer service. And Waste Pro is great, so, you know, maybe, I, I, again, I, not being a politician, I, I don't know what you can and can't do, but, but that would be something that would, that I would be very interested in even as just a resident.
Okay. And as far as development, you said you'd like to see some economic development and stuff. Um, what were your feelings about that? And what Marvin may be lacking, if any? Do you feel, what specific development? Do you, if you said you would like to see more development, what do, what do you think Marvin is lacking right now? As far as development?
Um, well, they definitely don't have a furniture store. That's what I can't tell them.
They do not.
No, they do not have that. But, um.
Would you like to see one?
I mean, I would love to see a couple little mom and pop things. Sure, I would. Um, but, you know, not, you know, we don't need big box things. I mean, part of the charm here is that it is small. It is a close-knit community. And, um, you know, if I wanna go to Best Buy, I'll drive to Blakeney, you know? But, um, yeah, I'd like to see a couple little mom and pop businesses.
So, spending money. Obviously, we have a limited amount that we bring in. Some, what are your thoughts on responsibility of spending other people's tax?
I think we just would have to, to do our due diligence on things and, and make sure that we're spending money wisely on things that benefit the city, that the people want to see.
So in the case, as I explained in the last interview, that we have a situation where we wanna build a town hall. We thought it was gonna cost 600. We changed that to, into the 900 and were convinced that 900 would do it. And then the lowest of three bids came in at like 1.8.
Oh, my God.
So it's almost, almost twice of what, so, so what do you do? The town wants, would like to see a town hall other than what we see? And we have the shortfall of almost a million dollars. I mean, that's just the building and the land. And that doesn't include necessary furniture and all the fun gadgets you wanna have for a town.
Well, I can help with furniture, but, but, yeah, that's crazy.
It is, but what do you do? I mean, as a, as a tax, as a council member representing the town, how do you, how do you, how do you get there? How do you, you know?
You know, I mean, obviously, part of the charm of living here is the low taxes. So, um, you know, raising them, you know, sometimes you have to do what you have to do in order to give people what they want, if that's something in fact that they want. Obviously, um, I think it's needed. Um, and maybe, maybe with a town hall, you can make it dual purpose, you know? Like if the, again, I'm the newbie, but, um, if you have a big building and you don't need all that space, maybe you can put a sheriff's office in one part of it and maybe you could put a library in the other part of it and, or, or something else, you know? And, and offset revenue that way.
Fortunately, libraries are closing their doors in hours, unfortunately. So getting the town to, and taxes on that earth.
And, and that may not, that may not be.
Everybody wants a library.
Yeah, that may not be legitimate. Um, but, you know.
The dual purpose, I like that idea, is, you know, we, we had talked about that, what it could be and what we could do to this.
I mean, even if you could, you know, run out, if you had a big conference room that you could run out to residents and they could use for business meetings, I mean, there, there has to be things that we could do, um, you know, if we just think about it, to, to offset some of that. We're actually getting ready to do a renovation of our home. Um, and we got some very reasonable bids on ours, so I'm not sure who.
Oh, have you passed me on that?
I, I, I'd be glad to, because the guy's off. And in fact, the guy is, uh, he's putting us in charge, like in touch with his subs.
Okay.
Whoever does that, you know? So, yeah.
As far as your duties, we meet, we set the meeting at the beginning of the year. All the meetings are scheduled, usually the second Tuesday of every month in the evening are, are regular meetings. Our work sessions are designed at nine o'clock in the morning on Thursdays currently, and we schedule for the whole year.
Not every Thursday, the last.
At last Thursday, I'm sorry. And trying to make it work for those who, of the less, that have kids and that sort of thing, so. And that usually works because of school hours. And you see any problems of being able to.
I work from home, so, yeah, I mean, I, I'm pretty flexible.
Any questions for us that you want to know that you're, you know, we'll, we'll answer anything. In fact, talking about communication, we are opening soon, we just made our schedules with, once, once, twice a month, we're gonna be having what's called Coffee with Council.
Oh, that's a great idea.
And in the evening cocktails. In the evenings, yeah, cocktails.
Oh, I like that idea, yeah.
So go to your beer, your local beer place.
No, that's, that's exactly what I mean, though. No, that's, that's exactly what I mean though, that's exactly, because then the people can talk to you.
We're the, you know, it, it is good to hear, but it's something that we've been discussing and talking about as a new council. From day one, really, and knowing we've had to address it. Um, what, I guess, really kicked in high gear was the, the advent of people putting out propaganda.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I love when sometimes we hear of facts, but facts are facts when it's fully. When you get the full fact.
Right.
Not partial fact.
Right.
Um, when you hear of Asia spas and, and all this other stuff. Um, but it's, it's going to be, we're going to over communicate.
I think that's, that's all you need to do.
Because transparency is the, when you look back at the past, there has not been transparency and there's not been communication and it has, and it has caused cancers. Um, and we're trying to, sunlight is the best.
It absolutely is, and, and that's the other thing is then things like the petition kind of stuff will go away because people can, they feel like they can come to you directly and you can address it directly with them and if the door's open, that's wonderful.
It's a great opportunity.
Yep, it is.
Any other questions for us about?
So, when are y'all going to make a decision on this?
Probably within the next, oh, well, we don't, within the next week or day. I mean, we hate to have to call another meeting, so maybe some discussion today and then a decision tomorrow. We haven't really talked about that, if we are going to recess this meeting till tomorrow morning and, and be able to talk individually with each other on, you know, what we're doing, but we're hoping to make it soon.
Sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
We'd like to get this spot filled and get moving and be able to work with the full council. Cool. Well, that's all I have. Bob?
How are you, Amy? I'm good, thank you.
Nice to meet you, Bob.
So, just so you know, for the rec, for the record, the, the two changes being made, are you familiar with that, why the petition is?
Yes.
Petition of that, do you understand that?
Um, well, I, again, what I would say is I don't know how much of it is, you know. Like I, like I did see the thing about the lawsuit, they had something in petition about the lawsuit that you talked about, if somebody would file it, which is. I mean, if the guy doesn't care, why would they do that? If the guy doesn't want to be involved, why, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
Okay.
So, but yeah, I, yeah, I, I think I understand it.
All right.
Okay.
Terrific, well, thank you for your time.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to meet you as well.
Take care.
Mr. Gilb.
After we make the fundations on the last schedule, you start getting. Cause I thought we were going to start about five minutes on each one and figure about the end, is we'd like a four vision.
Is Mike here?
Yes.
Good boy. I'm there, how are you? How are you? I'll go bump you here. How's it going?
Good.
All right. So, run through a few things for you, we are right on time, so we're going to just keep on going. Is everyone good to keep going?
Yep.
Bob, I don't see you, but chime in. Bob's lost. Hello, Bob?
He's on mute, thank him I walked away.
Either way, we will get started, if that's okay. Um, so, welcome, but before we do get started, basically, I'm going to be asking all the questions.
I'm here, by the way.
Okay.
How you doing, Mike?
Good, Bob, how are you?
Good.
So, what we're doing, Mike, is I'll be asking all the questions, maybe a little bit of follow up. You make a follow up from one of the council members, go in a little bit deeper dive on, based on your answers, possibly. And then, but before we do anything, we have some disclosures that we want to share and we're going to have the attorney share that with, with you, so.
I guess it's good evening now that we're all at the past spot. Uh, as you know, this is a vacancy for the position that was held by Robert. Uh, village council went through a procedure called an emotion process to have him removed. The, the basis was no attendance since May of twenty nineteen. Uh, Mr. Epps was given notice of a, of a hearing and an opportunity to be heard. He didn't respond, didn't come to the hearing and on April seventh, uh, village council voted unanimously to remove him. And he was served with a formal written order setting forth the terms on April ninth. Haven't heard anything back from him since, since that time. However, we were informed by resident that there could be a challenge regarding the new appointment that we're to make for this position. That would be through a quit warranty action. And what a quit warranty action is, is this a challenge to the actual, um, either elected or appointed positions. And a person doesn't have the lawful right to take that, um, appointment for a position. And I think before anybody, this is a challenge, you really have to look at the merits because I believe, uh, that this village council operated in accordance with the law and the motion process has been upheld by the courts in North Carolina. Generally, these are brought by the attorney general, because it's public sway to have a proper person in office. However, uh, if the attorney general does not want to get involved, private individuals can petition and request consent to bring, bring the action provided they post a bond for any costs and expenses. Uh, the one caveat we do want to disclose is, um, the village could not extend public funds for, um, legal defense in any action. So, if you were to be appointed and there was a challenge and you would have to decide on your own how you want to respond to that and if you wanted to retain legal counsel, that would be, um, on your own in your session. So, just wanted to disclose that.
Okay.
At the very beginning.
So, that being said, are you wanting to continue with this interview?
Yes.
Okay, very good, all right. So, um, you've been here how long?
Seven years.
Seven years.
I think so.
And one sentence, how do you, would you describe Marvin?
It's a great town to live in.
Being that you've been here seven years, obviously you have some ideas of what, I know you ran for a position here, so you had some visions and stuff. What's your vision now, knowing all that you know about Marvin and its future, would you say?
Now, Marv, we're, we're kind of in an interesting, you know, place in Marvin. You know, we, the, the town can go, you know, one of three ways. It can, you know, kind of stay the course and just be this little, you know, small village town that, you know, is kind of getting passed by by, by everywhere around. It can continue to develop, which I think you guys are doing a great job of doing, or it can, you know, go the extreme and, you know, be a, you know, crazy place, which I don't think anyone wants, but I think you guys are doing a great job. And I think I agree with the, the path you guys are heading down, which is kind of continuing to develop the, the village into more of a full service village for the residents and, and give the taxpayer something for their money.
What would you say, and I won't limit you to one, um, needs improvement in Marvin?
Communication is the number one thing. I think the residents, I think the, the funny thing about Marvin residents is with a lack of communication, they believe anything that they're told. And I think the more communication, which, you know, the more informed the residents are, everyone will know what a great job is going on around here and what everyone in this village, or this, this office does. I think that's the number one thing and.
So, how would you fix that, given what we do now?
I would bring in a communications person to help us, you know, and, uh, you know, a monthly. When I moved here, we did a monthly newsletter, was it a monthly newsletter or was it? That was mailed and it was great because you, you knew what was going on in the town. And I think if there was, you know, bring in a person, communicate, you know, do a recap of every meeting. Send it out, email it out, use social media more, keep the residents informed so that they actually know what's going on.
Okay. So, what would you say, name at least one good thing and one bad thing about Marvin?
One good thing, I, I love the, the lots being, the rules that we have in place. It's one of the reasons people move here. One bad thing? I think we have a lack of police force, um, and I think we have a lack of. I don't think, I don't think people see what they get for their tax money. I think, you know, we don't have like a Department of Public Works to improve the roads. If there's a, you know, if there's a, a dead deer on Joe Car Road, who goes and picks it up or?
You know, I've done that before.
I know, but.
You're the mayor of the town, you're not supposed to do that.
I know, that's okay. You know, if we have potholes or stop signs missing, it's, it's a long, it's a process. And I think, you know, if we, with, when we continue to buy the roads and, and take over roads, it's going to be something that needs to be considered in the future.
So, how do you feel your qualifications and experience currently prepare you to serve on the village council?
Uh, been our HOA president for many years, pretty much six, I think, six years. Advisory board, I think I'm actually the president this year at Firethorn. Ran for council, um. You know, feel like I'm pretty involved in what's, what's going on.
Are you still doing the, um, HOA board?
We were, we were, but it got.
Is off?
It got very political when everything was, uh, election started and then people thought there was agendas and. And it wasn't, it was just informational and it's something that needs to start back up. People thought there was ulterior motives and.
You seem to have struggled with the same things that we struggle with, you think there's ulterior motives, so, yeah, so you get it. Okay, um, so that's really not active right now?
It's not active right now.
Okay. Um, so what do you see as the duties of a council member?
To represent, uh, the people of the village and look out for, for everyone. And, you know, both in the near term and, and the long term. And, you know, you guys did a great job sending our, I think it was planning board sent the survey out and, and follow the guidance of what people want.
So, been here seven years, three major issues that we are facing right now in the next twenty-four months. What would you say that would be?
You know, in the village?
Yeah.
Traffic, um, safety. And obviously, the future of the, of the village center.
Any ideas offhand on what you would do to, to engage with? I mean, we just told the last candidate, we just learned today in a meeting that that circle's not going to be done until twenty twenty-two?
Yeah, the email came out today.
Okay, so you got that already. So, in those situations, I mean, how do you, can you pick any one of those traffic safety or the future of village center and tell us what you would like to see?
Well, the village center is, is, is interesting because the landowners are the ones probably be driving it. And they're the ones that, that would dictate really what, what they want to do. And, you know, if, if the village isn't working with the landowners and the landowners can just D N X and do whatever they want. And I don't think a lot of residents realize that. And as long as there's a, a plan that fits everyone, it's, it's a great idea for, for some sort of village center that could tie in safety and you could, you know, the. We could put a sheriff station, a little sheriff station, um, in, in tied into the village center and, and just, um, make it, add value to the, to the village more. And traffic and safety, that's, you know, I think you just got to hire more, more sheriff or more deputies.
That's a, that's a point that I don't know if we ever talked or made space for, but I know we always have an o, of office for an officer, but actual, like a precinct type thing, I don't think is ever discussed. What measures would you, would you take personally to resolve a conflict between yourself and other members of council? If you can give us an example of a conflict that you would, how you would work to resolve it?
You got to talk it out and listen to everyone and, and at the end of the day, think about what's best for the people and the residents of Marvin. It's, you know, check your ego because this isn't about you and, and what you want, it's about what the people want. And at the end of the day, remember that.
Can you give a specific example of how you've worked through a conflict?
How I have or?
Yeah, and, and any, any example of what you've personally worked through a conflict on, how you, how, how you work to resolve it, a specific one?
In like what sort of situation?
Yeah, like, say you were in, you, you had a conflict with someone, whether it's a neighbor. And it could be anything.
As a HOA president, it's, it's.
I'm sure you've had it.
Yeah, exactly, I, I had a conference call with the two, two neighbors. And I said, listen, you know, at the end of the day, no one, neither one of you is moving, so you need to get along. And it was over cutting of bushes. And I said, you know, there's, the North Carolina law is this, you can, you know, they're your bushes, but they grow onto this person's property and they're over the property line. If you want to cut them, go right ahead, but you guys need to remember, you got to get along. And we all talked it out and everything resolved and it was, instead of blowing into a massive ordeal, it was just talk it out and, and just realize that it's not a massive issue we're talking about.
And this question kind of leads into that one, you know, about listening. Feel you're a good listener, especially the public, or you find yourself like Joe Public comes to you as an issue, but you find that the village, as the village, can't resolve it. How, what would you do to, you know, resolve that for them or, you know? Basically, this is a listening question there. You're good about listening to complaints, do you have a problem with that and, and how do you?
Sometimes, sometimes people just need to get things off their chest and it's easier to sometimes just listen to them and let them, let them cool off for a second because they might not like what the village decides or what council decides. But they just need to get it off their chest and you just listen to them and just say, you know, we'll see what we can do and. And I'm sorry you feel that way, but, you know, council decided this. Legally, you can't do that or you can't do this, but it's, sometimes it's easier to just listen and let them talk and.
Okay. So, if you're chosen to serve on this board, do you have some items in mind that you would like to see the council address? Like we came on board, what would you like to hit the ground running with?
Yeah, um. I think our, I think speeding in the, in our village is, is out of control. When I, when I used to talk with Deputy Swan, he'd say, you know, I'd pull someone over and they'd laugh at me because, because, you know, Monroe would let them sell the ticket and move on. I think Marvin School Road, Joe Car Road, Marvin Road are all, people fly on those roads. I think some neighborhoods are becoming cut throughs as well, so I think, I think looking at some of the neighborhoods and some of the traffic patterns in some of the neighborhoods might be a good thing to do. I know my personal neighborhood, my residents are furious that people are cutting through our neighborhood. But, and I know, and I've talked in the council meeting before, I think we, we, there's some crosswalks needed and probably some stop signs needed in our town, as well as potentially road humps and stoplights. And it's, it might be easier to have people drive a lot slower through our town and stop using it as kind of a cut through.
Okay. Services, you know, what Marvin, probably lack a lot of services. We have officers, but we don't really have much in the way of services other than ordinances, which you can, can do.
Right.
What would you like to see us add, if anything?
Services? I think a, a little bit of a Department of Public Works person and also, uh, more officers. We can never have too many officers in this town. And, and my personal feeling is, is our residents will pay for it, they don't mind. If, if there's an officer on duty twenty-four hours a day that stays in Marvin all the time and you tell the residents, you know, and our, our taxes are going up one cent, I don't think there'd be an issue.
So, feelings of development in Marvin and what may be lacking, if anything?
In development?
Any kind of development?
I think our development is fine, I think it's, you know, I think, I think the rules that have been put in place for development are, are spot on.
So, no need for any other type of development, uh, even in a downtown center or?
Oh, obviously, some sort of village center downtown, or downtown built center, but in terms of neighborhoods, I think the, the rules for the neighborhoods are phenomenal.
And if we go forward on a downtown center, what, what, what do you envision it, you know, looking like?
Small town, um, local business, um, center.
Spending money, this is always a fun one. I'm using the example in these interviews of, we want a town hall. We estimated initially it would be six hundred thousand, that's what we had in the kitty. That moved to about nine hundred thousand, we finally got our first bids after pulling teeth. We got three bids of those came in at one point eight, one point seven. But our budget's, you know, nine hundred thousand.
There's a need to get a fix this one. It, it, you know, I brought it to the village before, you know, I, I work in the municipal bond industry, that's what I do. I trade bonds. Debt financing would probably be a great way for this village, um, to get everything they want done. Interest rates are so low right now. The village could put a list of everything they wanted done, greenways, finish the greenways, village hall, uh, finish the roads, put it all together, price it out and just do a, do a municipal bond deal.
I know we talked about that in the last council, kind of shot it down, I believe, and, you know.
Cause the word debt financing scares people.
Yeah.
It does.
Yeah. Well, I know rates are good though, but, uh, so, but overall, spending money, um, other than the debt financing, just how do you view overall spending taxpayer dollars and so what's your, what's your philosophy on it, if you will?
It's, you gotta, it's not your money, the new day is not your money. It's, it's, you have fiduciary responsibility to spend money in proper ways. Cause that's what you're elected to do, you're, you're elected to watch over the people, the people's money.
And then finally, and we're, we're a little ahead. Do you have, anticipating difficulties in participating as a fully engaged council member? Meaning that every second Tuesday we meet at six thirty, uh, we set the schedule to begin of the year and then, uh, the last Thursday of the month in the morning at nine A M. Do you have any concerns, issues or?
Thursday be a little tough, but, um, you know, I'm free every single night, so.
Are you able?
I have no, we have no kids, so, my wife works at night, so it's.
And the Thursday, are you able to work remotely? Would you be able to attend like? Would you be able to attend like like Bob's doing now?
Potentially, it is hard, though, but, you know, I could make it work, though.
Okay. Questions for us? Do you have any questions for us?
No.
Questions from the council, Bob?
I'm good, thank you.
Good. Good, all right. I think we're done. All right. Thank you, sir.
You guys.
All right. If you guys don't mind, I want to take a quick recess. Bio break?
What?
Wanting to take a quick recess? Do you have any bottled waters in the fridge?
I'll take a favor.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.